Action item, first number four.
We have a couple items in personnel reports, my wishes. First, we have dear Dr. Meyer, Dr. Bowman and assistant school district. Please accept the summary of official resignation from my position as second grade assistant school district. I have been teaching there for four years. I love every minute working with staff and students. The staff has helped me grow in today. Co-workers, instructional coaches, principals, mentors. I felt encouraged to be a part of my education and passion for teaching. My Westside team has been from a second channel. They explored me through the lost panel members of South Dakota. During this challenge, I was delighted and certainly welcome to coach here to be home with my family. As many of you know, I'm from Illinois, this is where I'm all over. I've been away from my family for five years and I've made the decision to move back to Illinois. Thank you to assistant school district for all your support, encouragement and acceptance of me into this school district family. It is an honor working here and being part of the Westside family. It will be memories I will share with you in your time out. Sincerely, Lisa. Also, dear Dr. Meyer, please accept this one as my official resignation from my position as the end health teacher with assistant school district. My final day of employment will be last in 2021, certified teaching contact. After much contemplation, I made the decision to relocate. I thoroughly enjoy my time with your assistant types and am honored to have each chance to work with social base and students in college. It's been a pleasure to go forward with these and excitement to teach them, making it very much the opportunity. Which in one of those successes, all teachers need to be part of that family. Sincerely, Paulie, Paul. So those who are due to the teaching resignations, we have a conference right. Also on your agenda, like personnel reports, looking for approval for Principal Don Cooky. Resignations of specialized staff at Feslin, assistant boys basketball coach, and Lisa Mordini cross-country. And also a resignation from Jerry Grove's art student.
One second.
Discussion. Favor.
Aye.
Opposed. You occasion I want to review of the point of all preliminary district.
Alright, so there are three main documents that we will be looking at as we work through the preliminary budget. One of them has orange on top and says 2021-22 preliminary budget. One has yellow on top and says 2021 budget. And then one is the other two-sided Excel spreadsheet that says, that has comparisons between the 1920, 2021, and 2022. To go to the three documents, we'll basically work through tonight. So in July, the board does approve the district budget. And that district budget is what allows us to move forward with our expenditures through the course of the resulting school year. So the orange top sheet, the preliminary budget tonight, it just kind of gave you an estimation of our proposals for the upcoming school year. This is your opportunity if you have questions about expenditures or our revenues or anything like that, it's the chance to really ask about something that's multi-diminished together. The landscape document that you have in front of you allows you to see comparison between the last few years compared to this year. So it's laid out in a little better format for you to see some of our revenue changes and also our expenditure changes. Our general fund budget is set by the state itself code every year. And that is how we receive our state aid student funding. And I created the budget to last year. The budget was created for 989 students. We had enrollment this year of 916 students. So this budget is based on stated allocations for 989 students. So if you see a decrease in revenue from state sources, even though we did receive a 2.4% increase from the state itself code for the upcoming school year, there is a decrease in that state revenue because of the increase of students. If we had more than 916 students on that fourth Friday in September, we would receive more. State departments, if we have fewer students than that, we would receive less. But that's just kind of where I'm basing that state support number on. The other projections, looking at revenues in and out, that's basically based on some data from years past where we can see some of those revenue component for some of our local sources of revenue compared to our expenditures. I'd actually like to look briefly at our instructional component. So if you look at our instruction expenditures for this year compared to last, there is actually a small decrease of $121,000 compared to last year. A portion of that is because we are looking at incorporating some characters of ESSER funding into our expenditure code, into our instructional programs. I didn't include all of our upcoming federal spending this school year because that is going to last us for the next two years. So I budgeted in just shy of $500,000 for some unallocated funds that we haven't decided that they're going to use for yet. When we talked about last time, hey, we could approve that we can look at hiring, for example, intervention teacher outside. That position is already created in this budget. It looks as though it's created within that general fund budget, but that reference source which is on the front of that ESSER's and characters funding is kind of how that goes to. Our Title I funding, and this is on the backside of that landscape sheet, there was an increase of this $158,242 in Title I funds. We don't have our final allocations yet for some of the title funding, like our RLI S funding, we don't have that allocation yet. So we're just guessing what that would be based on lasters. But our Title I allocation is lower. Also our, there was one other section within our title funding that is lower, the name escapes me right now. But between some of those title fundings, we are not getting as much as what we had received last year. There is likely going to be security over that carryover within July budget, so we might have higher priority in July budget than you approved, except for today, but this is just the numbers that we know to mature in today. One of the things that you'll notice is that, so we can't, we don't deviate from our general fund budget, again, that's the state department. We do have control over our capital all-day. We do have control over our special ed. So this budget is built on our special ed budget, being the maximum state dollars to do. That may be the flexibility if we have high-tech programs, high proceeds to go into our all-dispartnered cost fund and receive back some of that funding if needed. If we don't, if we don't use the top budget, the title of special ed funding, we would be able to go into the, go somewhere else this year. So that's why we, for the past five or six years, we've always just used that top local funding for our special ed. So that's in our practice in this industry. Our capital all-day budget, I had designed the capital all-day budget to have a revenue of $1.877,580. That capital all-day income has not changed in the past few years. So if you remember past conversations, we set to be involved in finally the monthly fee for capital all-day. And that budget is spread throughout our primary tax numbers with and assistant schools. We are not at the top of our capital all-day budget. We can take in more of that, more of that revenue we choose to do so. But for this year, I did build it today based on not changing that capital all-day revenue. And that with, for the year, we have not changed it. They have changed some of the formulas for capital all-day. Based on the formula that we've always followed, we could ask for up to $2,466,688, which is $169,618 more through what I have to do with the budget. There's also another code that allows you to ask for capital all-day revenue from a per student application. That would be initial $1.283 million. But at this point in time, I'm not proposing that we do make any of those changes. I'm just going to get sticking with that spread. $1.877 is our allocation that we would receive. Capital all-day is what we use for buildings, construction.
Any type of capital expenditures that are going to last a period of time. So that's what can be paid with that capital all-day expense. We also transfer $250,000 of capital outlay expense into the general fund to pay for utilities. We can transfer up to 30% of our capital outlay into general fund. That's the federal, or the funding rules that are in place in South Dakota right now. We only transfer $250,000 and the rest of it stays within that capital outlay. Anything that is not spent within capital outlay remains in capital outlay. There are no caps on capital outlay. As we move forward, one of the things that we did do last year is we did start with a fund balance in our capital outlay and that was to allow us to complete part of the building project as well. So we did that the last two years where we pulled funding from our reserves for capital outlay to complete that project. And that is not the case in this current budget. Another shift from last year is last year, um, last year, there was a transfer of Impact Aid into the general fund budget of $2.299,824. This year, that transfer over is less. I misspoke. Last year, if you look at the general fund means of finance, which is the very left column on the non-colored side of your sheet, there's a transfers in column on the bottom. And that transfers in column is funding that has to come either from a fund balance or we're transferring it typically out of that Impact Aid fund into another fund. So in that general funds line, $250,000 of that transfer in is a transfer out of capital outlay. The rest is a transfer in from Impact Aid. This year, I've actually decreased the transfer in from Impact Aid to our general fund by just shy of $50,000, meaning that we don't need as much Impact Aid money to balance the budget in general fund as what we did last year. So that's basically what that means in that calculation. In the capital outlay as well, I did budget in $1.5 million as restricted grant through the state. That would be the allocation of up to $1.5 million for any type of construction projects that would be capital projects that would fit that ESSER funding. So that's, that just gives us the ability to do it, though it does mean you have to. It just gives us the ability to do that if we so choose to do so. I know it's a lot of information to put in front of you. What happens now in this time until the July board meeting is we really fine-tune the budget and we make sure that everything lines up exactly where it needs to be. Because when that budget is approved in July, we can't deviate from that budget without board authorization to do so. So if you recall earlier in the school year, we had a small DSS grant into our preschool and WASP programs. The board had to authorize that budget supplement, or that budget amendment, so we could spend that, that funding. So once the budget is set for the year, it takes board authorization to change or spend if it's not listed in any of these categories. Oh, food service. If you look at the food service comparisons between last year and this year, so if you look at the, um, let's look at the means of finance side, which is the non-colored side. So if you look, look at food service, last year, we started with a fund balance of $50,000. And within that, there was also sales to pupils and sales to adults. Moving forward, we are totally anticipating that we would take advantage of the free meals for our students in the 2021-22 school year. In that, we wouldn't have any revenue for students or for adults. So in this particular budget, we have just pulled those line items out. We do have an additional food service fund balance of $165 that we're anticipating pulling into the food service account. As we move through the next month or so, we have not received where reimbursement rates are going to be for those meals. So we're not sure what our federal reimbursement will be yet. So at this point in time, there is a transfer in from Impact Aid of $95,000 into our food service fund. I anticipate that by the time we get to our July school board meeting, that number will be lower because we would have some better reimbursement values from the federal department on what our meal reimbursements for our students will be. But our anticipation, and the reason why we don't have any sales to pupils is because we plan on offering that free meal package for our students in the upcoming school year.
Is that for the entire school year or through the end of the?
It's the entire school year. Yep, so it's the entire school year. So we'll start our summer meal program on June 1st. Yep. And then our, when the students come back in the fall, the first day of school, our breakfast and lunch will be free for all students for the duration of the school year.
So the summer meal program, that's always been for you?
Correct.
Correct. And you're going back to doing that in person?
Yes. So the summer meal program will start on June 1st at Westside because WASP is open. We did receive approved waivers just the other day that a parent or guardian can pick up a meal and take that meal off-site for a student. Or the student can show up and take a meal off-site, or the student can eat on-site, which is our normal, what we've always done at, at Westside before during the WASP program. Our summer meal program, instead of, last year was an anomaly. Our summer food program, we typically serve a lunch and a snack because most of the patrons of that program are WASP students and those two meals, we can only do two meals a day. So those are the two meals we do. So if somebody would come off-site to pick up a meal, they would pick up a lunch and a snack, not a lunch and a breakfast. So the summer meal is just lunch and snack.
So you're saying, you're saying that you anticipate, right now, you've got it down as a $95,000 transfer in, but you anticipate it won't be that much when it gets reimbursed?
Yep, yep, that is correct. And then too, if you recall, so at the end of the fiscal year, at the end of June each year, we have a final board meeting and we do any transfers that need to happen in order to, to make sure we balance the books at the end of the year. There has historically been a food service transfer in written into the budget. I don't recall the last time we've actually transferred funding into the food service budget.
2015.
So since 2015. So we, we always have that transfer there and available, but we've not actually had to make that transfer in for that number of years. So then with our Impact Aid Fund 2, our Impact Aid Fund, anything that we don't spend, even if it's listed in the budget that we can, it just stays in reserves until there's a point in time where that funding would need to be used. And in order to use that, then we would have to build that into a district budget that's approved by you in order to touch any part of that funding. One thing that's not listed in here yet, we have, the board has approved that special ed transition program and we received that DSS grant for that program. That's not in this budget yet. So that would be in the budget that you would approve in July. So that would be some differences that we'll see both in that column in revenue and expenditures that just did not get built into this preliminary budget, but it will need to be built in before we hit that July board meeting.
This $1.5 million that we talked about, the grant, when does the personnel have to decide if we're going to use that for a project?
We have, it's been shared with us that by, I believe, August 30th, the district is supposed to have a preliminary budget for the ESSER 2 and ESSER 3 funds. So that preliminary budget would just basically lay out the big scope of how that funding is going to be used over the next three years. There is a template that we're going to be given that we haven't received yet. The state department hasn't received final guidance on any of those projects yet, but we would have to build a separate ESSER fund budget that's approved by the state by the end of August. So that $1.5 million would be built into that budget for the state department.
If we have a plan to use?
If we have a plan to use it. So, and I built it into this budget, so if we want to do any HVAC updates or things like that, we could use it in this fiscal year as well.
So the one, the 1.4 is what we used last year? Is that right, or what we got last year?
Last year, last year in ESSER funding, we only received $447,096 is what we received last year.
So what's the, on the final budget line for 20, 2020, 2021, what's the 1,404,397?
Can you point out which sheet?
The sheet here? The comparison sheet that shows the last three. Said in the preliminary budget on that line, it's got $2,354 and then it says we used $1,404. Is that that ESSER funds line? But that's only for this year, right?
Oh.
Or is that just transfers in?
Okay, so last year, last year, that transfer in in the capital outlay line, that $1.4 million transfer in in the final budget last year, that was a transfer in allocation from Impact Aid for the construction project.
Okay.
So it's, I kept it in that same line because we're still looking at transferring in funding into the capital outlay budget. And maybe transfer in wasn't the right line to put it into, it probably should have been in a revenue from federal sources line.
Okay.
But that $1.5 million in the preliminary budget would be ESSER funds. It would not be a transfer in of Impact Aid like we did in the two years prior.
So is that, that 1.4, that's all then transfer in from Impact Aid? That doesn't include that ESSER funding?
That is correct because we didn't put any ESSER funding last year into our capital outlay budget. And then that transfer in last year was just to finish the building project. And then again, so this gives us, so if you even look back into that capital outlay line, the final budget, 2019-20, there was an allocation to transfer in $6.9 million. That gives us the authority to do it, it doesn't mean that we, we do it. And we did not transfer in any year near that amount of money because what we were looking at for potential plans compared to what we actually did in a construction project were totally different. The budget was built with basically, here's the cap of what we could possibly do, but then we never transfer fund unless there's a need to do so. Does that answer your question?
Yep.
So really the things we have control over are our capital outlay revenues, somewhat control over our special ed revenues from local sources, and then what we, how and where we spend our ESSER funding for the next few years, and then where we transfer in Impact Aid funding if, if needed.
So do you need a motion tonight?
No, this is just information for you, to share with you. I'll probably ask even at the June board meeting if there's any other questions about this information. It's just a first glance at the budget for you to see what we're, we're looking at and what we would propose. And if you do look at this too, you do see that there's some shifts between the preliminaries and the finals. Now Lori and I will really get into the weeds of fine-tooth comb calculations of, of all of the different projections we need to make for the upcoming budget year. Because we do need to make sure that when we build that budget, it's built correctly and built well. This is kind of your opportunity to, if you see something that you have a significant question about, or if you would want us to have a higher capital outlay rate or a lower capital outlay rate today. Today is kind of the day to do that. So as we move forward in our budget process now, this is kind of your first glance, so
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the non-certified pay increase.
Set it.
Discussion on favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Motion to set the admin salary for the 2021 square?
I'll second.
Discussion on favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Motion to adjourn?
I make my
Second. Discussion on favor?
Aye.
Okay, you guys went too fast, too moved.
The journey, Lori and Lenny.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Back off, come in. Maybe rain tomorrow, maybe? Tomorrow night?
You want to plug me guitar? What's that? Are you going to plug yet?
Yeah.